So I'd like to first start by thanking you all for coming to join us tonight. And I would like to turn it over to Bill to get things started.
So thank you, Michelle, and thank you all for taking time out of your personal lives to join us here tonight. We appreciate you being here and sharing your opinions. We are fully aware that there's very polarizing opinions on the hiring of an SRO, and we want to respect and honor everybody's opinions as we make this difficult decision. I'd like to take this opportunity to explain why I'm recommending this position to our board. The recent tragedies across the nation are further reminders of the importance of a safety-first mentality in our schools. While there is no one preventative measure for stopping harm, we must continuously look to best practices and work with experts in the field to maximize student, faculty, staff, and visitor safety. School safety is often described in terms of layers. The more layers that are in place, the greater the district's protection and safety. Ever since I was appointed as superintendent of schools, my number-one priority has been the safety and security of our entire learning community. This was evident throughout COVID and remains evident today. Throughout COVID, I had to make recommendations on our policies and procedures that weren't always popular with some, however, those decisions were always made with the safety of all at the forefront. They were also made by seeking out and following the advice of our experts. For example, the Madison County Department of Health, the CDC, our district medical director, and our school attorneys. In the case of school safety, the experts I seek advice from are the New York State Police, specifically Trooper Derosi, who is a school and community outreach coordinator. The school and community outreach coordinators are well-versed in the intricacies of school safety and security, crime prevention and deterrence, and effective crisis response. I also seek out the advice from the Madison County Sheriff's Office, the Hamilton Police Department, the Department of Homeland Security, the New York State Center for School Safety via the State Education Department, and our school attorneys, who represent over 114 districts across the state. Their overwhelming recommendation is that we hire an SRO. In addition, 72.8% of our faculty and staff feel it's either important or very important for us to add an SRO, and 59% of the respondents in our parent survey feel the same. It's also my job to protect the district from potential liabilities. And per our school attorneys, the district has a duty to uphold a standard of care for our students, faculty, and staff. Every school within our BOCs and all but two schools within the county employ an SRO. If the district decided not to employ an SRO and there was a tragic event, the district could be held liable for violating the standard of care that's been established by the other schools that employ an SRO. It is my explicit duty to explore every resource available to provide a safe learning environment for all. When I lay my head on the pillow at night, I have to know that I've done everything I can to protect our learning community. God forbid if we had a tragic event here and I didn't advocate for every possible resource to protect our school. I could not live with myself. I understand the research that sheds a negative light on school resource officers. However, based on Sergeant Fiola's program and the feedback I've received from my superintendent colleagues in our region, that data does not correlate to what this program is all about. We are not looking to create a school-to-prison pipeline. We are not looking to target marginalized students. We are not looking to instill fear in our school. And if there is fear, we will educate to ensure those fears are alleviated. The two top priorities of the SRO program is to provide safety and security to our students and staff, and to be a mentor to our students. The SRO will interact with the students at every possible time during their day, greeting the buses, hallways in between bells, lunch, recess, et cetera. When students are in class, the SRO will maintain building security by walking halls, checking doors, and being visible to aid in the prevention of any issues. The SRO will make the best effort to maintain positive relationships with all students and staff. The SRO will not utilize a punitive response approach, but rather a restorative practice approach, and will take every opportunity to turn a negative situation into a learning experience. The SRO program is a perfect way for a law enforcement officer to regain trust with those who have had negative experiences with law enforcement. Having an SRO in the school shows children that law enforcement are people too, people who laugh, joke, smile, help with projects, play games with them, and care for others. My vision for this position is that they become another member of our team, which is here to help students grow and develop, and at the same time, provide a layer of protection for us. And speaking of our team, we're also in the process of increasing our social-emotional learning team by adding a coordinator of SEL with Mrs. Merk, and a full-time social worker via the county to go along with our director of PPS, three school counselors, a school psychologist, and behavior specialists. I'd also like to inform you that we're moving to a restorative practice model throughout our pre-K through 12 continuum as part of our code of conduct. For those not familiar with this model, restorative practices empower students to resolve conflicts on their own and in small groups, and it's a growing practice at schools around the country. Restorative practices is an approach to improve the school learning environment and student behavior based on three core principles: repairing harm, involving stakeholders, and transforming community relationships. The entire faculty and staff will be trained throughout the year by a professional from the International Institute of Restorative Practices, and our SRO, if this district decides to employ one, will be directly involved in this model of conflict resolution. I'd like to share some information that really resonates with me as these two women bring a truly unique perspective to the school safety discussion. Michelle Gay and Alyssa Parker are the founders of Safe and Sound Schools, which you can find at safesoundsschools.org. Founded by parents who lost children at Sandy Hook, Safe and Sound Schools is a national nonprofit school safety advocacy and resource center that provides research-based tools and support for crisis prevention, response, and recovery. Safe and Sound Schools is committed to protecting every school and every student every day, much like our mission here at HCS. Gay and Parker are both nationally recognized public speakers and school safety advocates. Gay lost her seven-year-old daughter, Josephine Grace, in the Sandy Hook tragedy. Parker lost her six-year-old daughter, Emily. Both women's impassioned positions on school safety hinge on every community taking a comprehensive and sustainable approach to safety. Both work diligently to unite stakeholders of all disciplines and perspectives. Here's what they have to say. "We are Sandy Hook parents, educators, and community members, all inspired by our children and educators who perished on December 14th, 2012. We chose to raise our families in Newtown, Connecticut, a small town where crime is low and values are strong." Very similar to HCS. "We chose Sandy Hook Elementary School, a place of love, learning, and acceptance. When our children boarded their school buses and their teachers left for work on December 14th, we never imagined that it might be for the last time. We all felt safe in our peaceful town and our high-ranking schools. We learned too painfully that we were not. Gaining entry into our locked school and access to our beloved children and teachers was as simple as breaking a glass window. At Safe and Sound, we advocate for multiple layers of protection in order to best secure the safety of your school community. We advocate for the presence of sworn law enforcement officers in the school community, specifically school resource officers. Their specific training allows them to best serve as a safety resource to staff and students, build proactive relationships within the school community, and carry a firearm and/or tools to provide protection and intervention when necessary. When I became superintendent, a fellow colleague shared this quote and piece of advice with me that I try to live by. 'If you think your decisions are what's best for your students, you can't be wrong.' I truly feel that my recommendation is what's best not only for our students, but our entire faculty and staff." So with that, I'd like to turn over the mic to Sergeant Fiola and Sergeant White from the Madison County Sheriff's Office, who will share more particulars of the SR program, and Mr. Jeff Lewis, one of our school attorneys from the Ferrara &amp; Ferenza Law Firm, who can answer any questions anyone might have in regards to our legal obligations or particulars of the proposed contract. So I'll turn the mic over. Thank you.
I work with the Madison County Sheriff's Office. I've been in charge of the SRO program since November. Don't mind my buddy here. This is Cameron. He's my son. He'll be one in two weeks. So he's joining me today because no babysitter. The SRO program started in 2018. We currently have 11 SROs across Madison County. The only schools that don't have SROs currently are Brookfield and Hamilton. Madison signed their SRO contract to start an SRO this upcoming year. So, and then Morrisville signed a contract to add another SRO, and Casanova signed a contract to add a third SRO. So if anything, we're seeing an increase in the need for SRO officers and nothing but positive reinforcement from our program. I know there's concerns regarding the prison pipeline. Thankfully, here in Madison County, that's not really a concern because we have such wonderful resources and staff and parents and students where we don't really have the gang violence and the guns and the drugs that are associated with a lot of the city schools. So we're very fortunate. We don't really have to worry about that prison pipeline thing because our SROs are not disciplinary. They're simply there to be a resource and provide security to our staff and to our students, which is a wonderful thing, where we don't have to worry about that concern. Don't get me wrong, we still have to address it if it becomes an issue. Yes, yes, we do. I am currently working on providing statistics for the board that they requested regarding arrests in Madison County since we've added SROs. Currently, the statistics I've provided haven't shown any type of increase whatsoever, but I'm going to do more elaborate ones for them and have them to them hopefully by the end of going on vacation next week. So hopefully by the end of the following week. And address any other concerns that they have. Unfortunately, our reporting system doesn't really classify things in a way to make these statistics easy to come by. So it takes me a while to go through because I have to go through every single arrest we've ever had in order to get them the answers they're looking for. But once we have the statistics, then from that point on, it'll be very easy for me to keep track of them going forward, which will be nice. Last time we were able to bring an SRO with us, his name is Mark Doobie, and he's SRO at the Ballaver School. He was not able to come today. And unfortunately, once school goes out, like most teachers, the SROs kind of scatter, go on vacation, join golf leagues, all of that kind of stuff. So I wasn't able to get a gentleman here tonight to be able to directly talk to you about what they do as SROs. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I have an intimate relationship with all of my SROs. I know what they're doing day in and day out. We have an open line of communication where we can effectively really work with our students and our staff and get the resources to the schools that we need. Sergeant White, talk about more of the other process.
Thank you. One thing I just wanted to touch upon was that our SROs aren't in, you know, full, uniform, military gear. They just wear khaki pants, you know, a black polo shirt, you know, just so it's a non-intimidating type setting on that. She runs the SRO program. She does a very, very, very good job. She knows all the knowledge. For those who don't know me, my name's Matt White. I'm an investigator here with the sheriff's office. I work very closely with her because whenever we get any kind of child abuse complaint or, you know, serious type bomb threat or any kind of serious incident that calls for an investigator, it comes through her SROs, and they come directly to me. I feel very strongly about the program. I don't have statistics for how many tragedies may be prevented, but I know that all the schools that have SROs, we get countless reports every week of so-and-so is talking about, you know, coming into the school and doing things or coming into the school with a weapon on Thursday. That comes directly through the SRO, and I don't know that that information would have come to us otherwise. So a lot of the prevention that I do and my investigators and my team does is we'll go out to the houses and actually kind of prevent things before they even happen in the school, as far as that route goes. I'm a community member here. I live in Hamilton, live in the town. My wife teaches third grade. My children, they're back there in the back row. They attend Hamilton. As a parent here, I feel very strongly, I encourage the relationships that they foster in the SRO program. It's not about enforcement in the school. It's about building trust and building relationships, being comfortable with police and law enforcement. And I've seen it firsthand, especially in the high schools that have them, of kids that feel comfortable talking, you know, to SRO, Doobie, things that they would never tell their counselor or teachers or et cetera. And like I already said, in turn, leads to me being able to go and follow up in the field with students, some of which did have bad intentions that were prevented well before they even were able to carry it out. So that's my involvement. That's who I am. And thanks for having me here today.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Lewis. I'm a partner with the Ferrara &amp; Ferenza Law Firm. As Bill indicated, we represent about 115, 120 school districts in New York State. So we have quite a bit of experience with negotiating SRO agreements and seeing how SRO programs operate in those schools. I can tell you at least anecdotally, and our client base is almost exclusively in the central New York, upstate New York area, we've had an overwhelming success in our school district clients with these programs. I can tell you some of the considerations that go into these agreements and that go into making these programs run smoothly. One is selecting the right person for the job. This is not a typical police officer role. This is somebody who wants to be in a school, wants to be working with kids. And from what I've seen, that care has went into the selection process here, and that consideration has been at the forefront. Also, it's important to, at least initially, if there's any concerns about the agreement, to have a shorter-term agreement. For instance, a one-year agreement or a two-year agreement with a termination clause if it's not working out or if there's any issues within the school. The agreement that's being considered here is a one-year agreement with a 30-day termination clause. So, you know, I don't want to call it a pilot agreement, but it's a test the waters and let's make sure that this operates the way that we want it to operate. Other important factors are, are we training our school community on what the SRO's role is in the school district? Are we training the SRO that's coming into our school district about what their role is? All of that is built into the agreement. All of that is, I know, being developed and is at the forefront of this program. And also, a huge part of these agreements is collecting statistics annually. How is this actually operating? The concerns that community members have about arrests or citations that are unwarranted, are we getting actual data each year that's establishing that that's not how this program's being operated? So we've tried to build all that into the agreement. I know Bill and I have had conversations about how these programs run, and he's worked with other superintendents that we've worked with on how these programs are run. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement, about the SRO programs that I've seen statewide, or anything else.
Jeff, can you just speak a little bit to the school-to-prison statistics that are out there nationally that you're seeing with your clients?
Yes. So again, anecdotally, and we've seen SRO agreements in schools for about 20-plus years now. We haven't seen any of these issues come up that we've seen in some of these prison pipeline statistics. I'm not sure if that's because our client base is almost exclusively upstate New York, and I know a lot more care goes into these in upstate New York than some other areas nationally. But we've, again, over 100 clients, we've been negotiating these agreements for 20-plus years. It's almost been completely positive in terms of how these are run. We haven't seen any overactive police officers or any programs run where the emphasis is placed on arresting students or attacking marginalized communities. So again, anecdotally, it's just not something that our office has seen with our experience.
Those people that came in after we started, so thank you for being here. And we'd like to turn the mics over. If you could, please just remember to be respectful when you come to the mic. We would like people to try to keep their comments, to comment and not stories if possible, just time-wise. Obviously, short stories are all right. But, and to remember that we do have a five-minute-ish timeline that we have in our policy for public participation. We aren't going to time people, but if it seems like people are going really long, we will ask you to wrap up, just out of respect of other people being able to get to the mics. So if anybody did have questions or comments, step to either mic, and I'll open the floor.
Hi, my name is Andy Patterson. I have an incoming kindergartner. This is my first one of these meetings as a parent, so thanks for the opportunity. We live out on, by the lake, Moraine. And let's see, I guess my question is informed less by what happens in the school day-to-day because my kid has not yet attended and won't be until after Labor Day, but more as a former public school teacher, I worked at two different institutions, one of which had an officer, one did not. And they weren't here. They weren't in Hamilton, so I'm not pretending that my knowledge or experience that I have is directly transferable to here. But I would just comment that I read the agreement, and understandably, the legalese around what's required for the position can't spell out what the trainings would be because that would be, you know, impractical. You couldn't spell it out. So all appropriate training phrases like that are used, which is what you'd expect in a contract like that. But I guess my comment is very specifically about the fact that we all know that when individuals have to interact with police officers, it's usually because it's the worst time of their life, you know? Like, it's a bad day for everybody. And so understandably, there's a certain way in which those interactions normally go down. And anybody who works with kids every day, all the people in this building who work with kids every day, and everybody here who has kids just knows that kids just aren't adults, you know? Like, there isn't, there's definitely data that their prefrontal cortex is not all Like, there isn't, there's definitely data that their prefrontal cortex is not all baked right here. They're still, you know, being molded. And, you know, decision-making, sort of understanding what happened and how to make a rational choice about it is just different. And so I, as a parent, would just love to see that training a little more explained to me and what it means, specifically about what it's like to interact with a young person and how that's just a really different thing than interacting with an adult in terms of how to attach behaviors to consequences and what that would mean moving forward. Because understandably, again, it's not in the agreement and I'd love to see it and hear about it as a parent.
Would you be able to give a little bit of, essentially?
Talked about all day. Thank you for giving me an easy question. So luckily, I actually just responded to Bill's email. So all of the officers coming in, they are already police officers. They are retired police officers, so they have all the training a police officer would normally have when it comes to crisis intervention, mental health calls, things of that nature. Our SROs also go through another training. It's a week-long training, 40 hours. It's called School Resource Officer School is basically what it is. And during that, you learn about juvenile interactions. You learn about developmental disabilities that are seen prevalently in children and adolescents. You go over special mental health needs for children and adolescents and how to appropriately interdict on those behavioral outbursts that could occur and things like that. So they do become specially trained in dealing with those kind of situations. They also learn, yes, I know. They, almost every single SRO I have has kids too, which is fantastic. So they, they not only care about kids, but, you know, they, they have kids themselves. They know the challenges that these parents face on a daily basis. They know the struggle, they understand the struggle as a parent too, which is huge for parents, for have someone in the school that understands what your kids are going through. So yes, they do receive specialized training as an SRO when it comes to dealing specifically with students, interviewing students, talking to students. Does that address your question, sir? But they do receive specialized training in that, yes. And what we could do, we could, you know, do an outline to the school every year on all the training that the SROs go through annually. We do a SRO refresher every year. So for this year, we are going to go through the shooting in Texas, the falls that happened there, the failures by law enforcement, and how we're going to make sure that doesn't happen in New York State. We're going to go through implicit bias, we're going to go through de-escalation tactics, we're going to go through use of force tactics. So all those really sensitive topics that people worry about, cultural diversity, being accepted, accepted of people in your community, all of those things are things that my SROs are going to go through every single year, which is a nice thing. So we could always push, push that out to the school every year on what trainings we're going to do, and so that way the community's informed on what type of person you have in your school and what kind of training they're receiving, absolutely.
Hi, Eric Muller, parent of a first grader and a one-year-old, Palages. I had one question. There was a question from the panel up front about statistics, and both of the speakers who I saw specifically said they don't have statistics. I would love to be convinced by statistics and not, I don't have statistics, I have anecdotes. That would be wonderful if there was a way to provide any statistics whatsoever, that would be awesome after this meeting. And then as an anecdote myself, I will say that in my primary school education, my secondary school education, and my post-secondary education, the school has always been very clear that one of the roles in what we might think of as dealing with a problem is protecting students from legal consequences and giving students a second chance and a chance to learn. And I think, right, that chance to learn is essential. Thank you.
So the statistics that I've provided so far to Bill, the first group was to show basically from the first five years before we had SROs in the school to the current five years that we've had SROs in the school, to show that, you know, that there hasn't been like a big change in call volume and things like that and that the kids are utilizing our SROs. So I went through every single call where an SRO was used to determine if they reported to the principal, they reported to the SRO, they reported to a teacher, they reported at home, and then it made its way back to the school to show that our SROs were being used. And it was about 50% of the time, a complaint came into the SRO directly, which is fantastic because it shows that they're not afraid to go and talk to the SROs, which is what we want. Heaven forbid something horrible is happening to this student. We want them to feel safe going to law enforcement and making sure that that gets addressed. That was one side of the statistics. And then, oh, Bill, first member was the other one that I sent you. The one I'm working on right now, unfortunately, correlation does not equal causation. There's so many factors that come in to an SRO being quote-unquote "successful" or efficient in the school. It could be, you know, the teachers doing a great job, it could be the parents doing a great job, it could be the SRO doing a great job, it could be the type of resources you have in your community. Oh, thank you. There's so many things that play into it. So an SRO having less arrests or more arrests doesn't necessarily correlate to how they're doing, but I am breaking down those numbers for Bill currently. That's what I'm working on. It just takes a very long time because I have to go through every single arrest, one by one. So I've, I've done the first, Bill just requested that one two days ago, and I'm about seven years done out of the 10 I'm analyzing. So I hope to have those to him soon to show that there really hasn't been an increase in the arrest pipeline, so to speak, once putting SROs in our school. The statistics I've sent so far haven't shown that, which is fantastic, but unfortunately, correlation does not equal causation. So even, even if I do provide these statistics and they're positive in every way, doesn't mean, it, it just doesn't correlate. So even if it's in our favor for SROs, it still does not mean that it's the SROs that are doing such a good job. I have to preface that, unfortunately.
Can I ask you about, maybe we're misreading this spreadsheet you sent us?
Yeah.
The one that says school threat-related calls?
Yes.
And so you have two columns. One is for the five years of 2013 through 2017, and then 2018 through 2022. And the second column would be the one that has when there were SROs in schools. But it does show a significant increase in the number of reporting incidents, right? Who goes from 14 to 53?
Yes. So that shows reporting though, not arrests. That shows that our SROs are being utilized, that people are actually talking to the SROs. So that just, so I, basically I did the initial to show those are just all the calls reported about a school, whether it's a threat of violence in the school, whether it's someone that was beat up in a school. So that was just calls taken to the sheriff's office. And then I sent you a separate one, which was arrests for making a terroristic threat to show that the arrests really haven't changed at all for, for that specific arrest. There's so many different categories, it's very hard, so I just chose one. I did making a terroristic threat, so that could be going through social media, someone making a bomb threat, someone saying they're going to bring them to school and hurt people, whatever the case may be, that would be the arrest for making a terroristic threat. So I tried to utilize that key one to show that.
So, so that same spreadsheet, one of, one of the reasons for the call says police information. What does that mean?
So police information, so that could be anything. That could be, someone said that a kid was going to bring them to school. So we went and talked to the student and turns out it was completely false, someone spread a rumor, and that's it. Case closed. You know? So, but it came, it came through the sheriff's office so that we had to investigate it. So, or a suspicious incident, could be something similar, could be someone was walking around the school and they weren't supposed to be there, and we get there and we find out it was a guy looking for his lost dog. You know, it could be anything like that. So that would be.
Would it be valid to read into this that it means that every time, every one of these incidents would have resulted in at least an officer or student interaction of some kind, where an officer was?
Yes.
Interacting with a student to investigate or to determine some kind of incident?
Say that again?
It, it, it would mean that an officer and a student did interact with each other?
Maybe not necessarily the officer and the student. It could have been a teacher and a student. It could have been, it was, that all those calls were related to a school, something happening at a school.
And then police involvement?
And then police involvement, yes.
And then students wouldn't be involved in, would be part of that police involvement somehow?
Possibly, depending, because a good example would be for Moore'sville. We get complaints all the time of people going to the track after hours, and people walking through the school because they leave doors unsecured and stuff like that. So officer goes, there's no students there, it's after hours. So they're not really interacting with students at all, but they're making sure the school is safe. So there's no, if, if you want me to go through every call and determine when student interaction occurred, I can do that. It'll take me a while, but I definitely can do that.
But it would, I mean, I guess we could glean from this, would it be fair to glean from this that after more SROs were in the schools, there was greater interaction between police officers and students?
Yes.
Due to calls to the police for?
Yes. Yes. Was it your buddy? The child?
Dorsey Spencer. I am the father of a fourth grader here in Hamilton Central, but also the son of a retired police officer, right? So I have, in law enforcement, and my family grew up around police. One of my biggest concerns with the SRO is while the statistics do not add up to say that SROs make a school safer, they do add up to say that SROs, our SROs increase the likelihood of a negative interaction with students of color, right? And those from marginalized communities. That's been proven time and time again that having a SRO in a school increases the likelihood of our students of color to have negative interactions. So that is one of my biggest concerns of having a SRO in our, in our school district is our historically marginalized, whether that's our LGBTQ plus folks, whether it's our students of color, whether it's our students with neurodiversity, right? Those are the individuals that I'm most concerned about in their interaction with the SRO in this particular scenario in general. As we look at the data, I would love to know at, with the institutions or these schools with the SRO there, the ones that we're looking at and pulling the data from, what is the diversity of those schools? Right? Because Hamilton tends to be a little bit more diverse than some of the surrounding nearby communities, right? So we have, we tend to have a higher concentration of families of color here than we would have in some of the surrounding areas, right? So I want to know what is that interaction like? If there, if there is an increase in the arrests, if there is an increase in the interaction, what is, can we disaggregate the data to show what was the racial breakdown? Right? Are those more people of color? Are those communities, communities even have people of color? Right? Because I think that's something that we need to definitely consider as we are bringing law enforcement into the institute, into the actual schools, right? Because I'm worried about, my son is a black boy, right? And black boys do not have a lot, a lot of success with law enforcement in K through 12 education, right? That's been proven in many different cases, right? Study after study after study after study. So I guess for me, it's one of those things of how do we ensure, right, that bringing law enforcement to our schools does not negatively impact our students of color? Right? Right? That we come from a family of law enforcement, have cousins and everybody that are in law enforcement, right? And they do not currently have a negative image of law enforcement. But it only takes us one negative interaction at their school or growing up to completely turn that upside down. So I know we talked about training and all those things, and most law enforcement departments receive some kind of training, but we don't see that play out as we see them interact with communities of color time and time again, right? They get implicit bias training, all these de-escalation training, but there's still unar, black men and women being killed on a regular basis, regardless of their training. Right? There's still police officers not going into active shooter training, after shooter situations despite their training. So how do we, as a community, ensure the safety of our children, right, in a school setting while also making sure that we are disproportionately impacting those from historically marginalized backgrounds?
Hello, Amanda Stewart, and I'm the parent of two kids here, one who will be entering third and one entering second grade. I, trying to formulate my thoughts. I have one kid who is quite involved in the school for many reasons, and, you know, Dorsey mentioned neurodiversity, and one of my biggest concerns with having an SRO, as a kid who has struggled with emotional regulation in the class and has often had to be, you know, taken out of the class, speaking with the counselors and the school psychologist, which I think is really, you know, the right place for them to go. My biggest concern is that my kid, you know, having an SRO will then now be interacting with perhaps an SRO because my kid, that I have been informed, can be heard screaming down the hall. That's how disruptive he has been. And I'm worried that my kid will be spending less time in the classroom, more time, maybe not in, in a negative interaction with an SRO. I think it's great that there's the mentorship there, but I fear that an SRO could be used as a crutch, perhaps by administration or the teacher, because my kid has had really challenging situations. And I'm worried that he's going to be the BFF of the SRO and he's not going to be in the class.
Genuine concern, absolutely. And I can't say that that will happen. I wish I could stand in front of you and say that, but I, I have no way to predict the future. I can tell you that students that do have or have had behavioral outbursts with my SROs, they haven't been used as a crutch, they've been used as a safety tool to stand by, heaven forbid it gets violent. Or there was one student where he would have behavioral outbursts and my SRO, Joe Stala, brought in a tent, and the tent would keep the bad thoughts out of his head so he could focus on his work. So his resource officer would come down to Stala's office with the student, and he would sit in his tent with his resource officer, and that's where he would do his work because that worked for him. So my SROs try to, try to do stuff like that and try to, they would, they would keep those, those resources for the students involved. They don't, they don't want to be the only person in the child's, you know, in their learning capacity. They want to help mold the child and obviously make it so that they can be in a learning environment, and they'll come up with ideas on how to do that. I have not had a school use an SRO as a crutch, thankfully. I wish I could say it won't happen, but I can't speak to that. But they're not supposed to be used in that capacity. As for the previous gentleman?
I want to talk on some of that too when I get this time.
Absolutely. I would say O'Nida would probably have a more diverse demographic than Hamilton even. As of right now, I haven't done any statistics on Hispanic, non-Hispanic, things like that. I have not broken down the stats in that capacity. However, I can tell you that Madison County is approximately 7% of different heritages other than Caucasian, and Madison County only makes arrests, out of all of our arrests, less than 4% are of other ethnicities. So we are already breaking the mold with the statistics. We do not arrest a higher amount of people of minorities than other places. So Madison County is already breaking the mold. We arrest base, our demographics are actually lower than our demographics. Does that make sense? Am I explaining that accurately? So we're, like I said, we're very fortunate in Madison County to have such a great community that we work in where we embrace diversity, we embrace cultural differences and accept. So we're very fortunate to have that. I can work on numbers like that for you, sir, and see what I can find. To my knowledge, we haven't had, at least since I took over the program in November, every single arrest has been, I hate to put it this way, but has been of Caucasian male or female. We have not made any arrests of anyone of any minority since, as a student, since I took over in November. I can speak to that. I would have to go back further to check statistics prior to when I took over the program. I'm sorry.
I think most everyone knows me here. I'm Matt Janzick. I'm the acting chief for Hamilton currently, and will hopefully next week be, wow, I will be officially, I think, next week. But I've been very involved in the school since I started working here in 2012. Bill was principal, and I share concerns similar to Dorsey's comments about, you know, students of color or LGBTQ or any sorts of that. I come from a biracial family and I understand the concerns greatly. And I think as far as the board's concerned in regards to that, I think it's a great opportunity because to my knowledge, the sheriff's office hasn't hired anybody for this position. So there's going to be an extensive interview process if it is approved. And I would encourage the board to come up with great questions like that to get the candidate to give down to the sheriff's office. Been a great supporter of the school district. I think in 2018, I went through New York State Juvenile Officers Association training. It was a 40-hour schooling. It kind of coincides with the juvenile SRO program. It kind of coincides with the juvenile SRO program. I think I'm the only one in Madison County with that certification for the juvenile officer. And I actually won juvenile officer of the year in 2020 for the entire state of New York for my work that I did with youth in this community through my racing and my, you know, side stuff. So I was pretty proud of that. So I share a different bond with this community and I also have two young children. And I can speak directly to, maybe a month ago or not even, my child. I got a frantic call from my wife, I heard the call go out, my son's in the school and there was a threat, the school went into lockdown. And it was a serious threat and I never felt more safe knowing that there was an SRO in that school to be able to calm my wife. I think another important thing is to know with SROs, you know, our goal is not in any police situation to arrest a juvenile or any adolescent. Like you get that perception from people, they want arrest statistics. That's not why any police officer's at a school. And I can speak for the fact that I've had to arrest a student in the school for bringing a firearm into the school. It was the worst thing I've ever done and it's never fun having to arrest a child because they are still learning and they made a bad decision. It's not a fun thing for anyone. I'm a parent, both the deputies are parents. It's not a fun thing to have to arrest any child. It's, we want to provide resources to help them. And that's the whole role of an SRO program in any school, is to just be a tool to help them. I'm very visible in the school, I'm here a lot, not as much as I'd like to be. Playing with the role that I'm in right now and we're a little bit short-staffed. Law enforcement is very difficult to fill positions and we're in a small community in the most southern part of the county, which is another great resource with the sheriff's office offering funding for this position. Which is why the Hamilton Police isn't as big of a role in it because of funding. So I just wanted to thank the school and everybody that's been involved because it's been a huge process to get where we are today. And the amount of money and time and resources that have went into getting to this point and the time that they've spent researching all of the data. Speaking of data, it's extremely hard. It sounds like you should be able to click a mouse button and pull it. The county system is so outdated, they're in the middle of rebuilding it, we're getting on a new system. It is very, very difficult to get that data. She literally, you know, Sergeant Fio is going through every single incident. Was it called in through the school or was it called in at home by a parent that heard it from their son when they got home? And you have to sift through every bit of it and read all the narratives to figure out where it actually happened. Hopefully when this new system comes out, it's going to be much better for everybody to be able to pull data and see all of that information. So I hope that was somewhat helpful because I just think I really have a passion for this community that I serve. And Bill knows, you know, I've been really, I've been really an advocate for this for a long time. For years really, we had a person in the school for a few hours every day and I tried to stop in every week at some point to see the kids. And we really did change the dynamic of students seeing a police officer in the school years ago. Everybody thought something was wrong because there was a police car in the school. And now it's like, you get high fives walking down the hallway. And I actually offended a kid a couple of weeks ago because I didn't realize, I thought he was stretching his arm and he was actually trying to high five me. I circled back and got him and he was pretty happy about that, so. But he did call me out on it, so. And I just wanted to say that, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Woolley. I've been a parent of two rising 2nd graders who've been in the school for a year now. But I'm also a professor of education who does research in schools and public schools in our nation. I've been a teacher, a researcher and a supervisor of student teachers for 20 years in schools in New York City, California and central New York. I'm also, I come from a family of teachers, so I care very passionately about schools and our students and school safety. I've also met a number of SROs over the years who are fabulous individuals and who I've loved working with. So I also want to say thank you for being here tonight. I know it's difficult to be here and also to bring your child and to be wrestling and answering all of our questions. And I want to recognize too, that like the summer is a really hard time. It's time when people scatter, right? So I question the board's decision-making at this moment when families have scattered on summer vacation. SROs are hard to come by to come to a board meeting at night. Teachers also scatter and go on vacation. So I wonder about making such a huge decision with such a small response rate in your survey that went out. It's not a matter of whether or not we need research specific to central New York or specific to Madison County that demonstrates the prison to pipeline, the school to prison pipeline that you're dismissing. But rather, this is a general, that's a bigger statement of the research looking at the data across a number of schools that the research shows us that increasing, that bringing an SRO into a school increased a long list of negative outcomes for students, including contact with police, students feeling less safe, in particular students of color, black students, LGBTQ students, gender non-conforming students and students with disabilities, to speak to Spencer's point. It's an increase, it leads to an increase, the data shows, to student arrests for discipline issues that used to be dealt with by schools. So it's also a philosophical shift of what used to be a teacher's domain to handle discipline in their classroom to instead being the responsibility of managing behavior by a specialist or an SRO. So we see that SROs in schools increase rates of suspensions, increase rates of expulsions, increase rates of escalation from low-level offenses to what become much bigger. Students get tasered. The data is actually quite astounding. One thing that the data can't really show us is the opposite, right? How do we know how the prevention of something or the exclusion of something hasn't happened? What's the empirical evidence that shows that something didn't happen? In a study that I sent you this afternoon by Peterson, Densley and Erickson in 2021, did a study of 134 schools, 133 active shootings in the US from 1980 to 2019. And looked at all of those occurrences. So, and I'm thinking about the anecdotes of parents from Sandy Hook and sort of this call to like, we need more security in terms of guarding ourselves from an armed shooter, an outsider. Of those 123 shootings, an armed guard was on scene at 23.58% of them. That's 29 out of 123. I'm sorry, 33. The armed guards were not associated with significant reductions in rates of injury. In fact, the rate of deaths was 2.83 times greater in schools with an armed guard present. The data suggests no association between having an armed officer and deterrence of violence. An armed officer on the scene was the number one factor associated with increased casualties, basically because the presence of a weapon increases aggression. And many school shooters, we know, are actively suicidal, intending to die in their act. So an armed officer in a school can actually be an incentive to take out your shooting there. So there's a number, there's a number of studies and data and statistics out there and I'm happy to forward to anybody who's interested that shows us that there's a lot of negative outcomes and occurrences that correlate with increasing police presence in schools. So it's not a matter about the specificity of Hamilton Central and its racial demographic, but the fact that we're trading on what could be a restorative and community-based practice, rethinking our discipline system and also shoring up active shooter protocol and emergency protocol instead with the addition of an armed officer. I would like to urge the board to reconsider voting on this, on this night in the middle of the summer and perhaps to solicit more input from more parents and guardians and teachers. Thank you.
Following up again on Bill's question, and thank you for the statistics, Susan. I am a chemist and I don't know anything about social science. I do know a little bit about statistics and the null hypothesis. Lack of correlation between SROs and a pipeline does not in any way disprove the pipeline. That lack of correlation is irrelevant. What is relevant is whether an SRO has a statistically significant reduction in, the presence of an SRO statistically reduces the number of terroristic threats. If an SRO statistically significantly reduces the future people bringing guns to school and other violent acts. Or the opposite, where the presence of an SRO, as Susan pointed out, increases the risk of death in a school. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Nelson, I've got four kids in the school. Just want to thank everybody first who's here serving the children in our community that way and also everyone that's here that's serving our community to make it safe. We live in a great place and I'm glad for everyone's perspective. Just have a brief comment and maybe a brief question that might even be able to answer tonight. When I'm looking at the frequently asked questions that were published, you know, for this and before that were helpful, one person's question said, "From what I've read on the FAQ page in the parent portal, it appears the decision to have an SRO has already been made." I laughed when I read that because I felt the same way. Just in the way this has been presented, it kind of feels like this is not a neutral point that's up for discussion. It sort of feels like a decision's already been made and we will give you whatever information you need to understand why we've made it. I understand that's not really the case, but I would echo the point from this. It does, you know, it does feel that it's not a completely neutral decision in the way that the information is being presented. And I think that's echoed even in how the responses were to the questions that people submitted. I submitted questions, mine aren't on the page. So I'm just reading from the questions from others, but it seems like people have good points. I'm going down to the last question that is recorded that was submitted. And forgive me, my eyes are reading small kid books, I guess, at night. Let's see, it says, "Their SRO program is a perfect way for law enforcement officers to regain trust and those who have had negative experiences with law enforcement. Having one at school shows kids that they are people too who laugh, joke." And it goes on, and this is an answer to a question. Again, this is part of the narrative that makes me feel like this isn't a neutral discussion that's before the board, that perhaps the decision's already been made. Because it's giving examples of SROs or people too. And if our goal is to have a, let people know that SROs are people, do we really need them in the school? And so I don't feel like the answers are very objective. So it concerns me with how these questions have been answered and wondering what other questions might not have been added on besides my own. The short question I have is, I did hear of some schools being tonight, if I heard it correctly, that they, some schools were adding SROs, like a second or a third. And then that was something that I realized I'd never thought about before this meeting of how many SROs can a school have? And what's the ideal number of SROs that are being proposed for the school? I thought it was just zero or one. And now this has opened up that maybe this is an incremental decision that once you get one, you're more likely to get two, that you're more likely to get three. I don't have any context for this, but that raises more of a concern. Thank you.
Yes, so Casanova, they have one at Burton Street Elementary and then they have one at the high school. They've now added a third to the middle school. Mooresville has one in the high school and now they're adding a second to their elementary school. And they're separate, they're separate buildings. Same with Oneida, we have one at Otto's Hotel and this past year we added one to the Durhamville Elementary School. So when I say two or three, I don't mean in one building, I mean separate locations. I apologize, I should have professed that.
Hi, everyone, my name is Teo Bolve and I have two kids here at HCS. I'm a volunteer firefighter and I mention that simply to illustrate that I am not somehow anti-law enforcement. In fact, I work with some colleagues from the sheriff's office. And my concern is the latitude of the purview of the SRO. So the amount of things, responsibilities that the SRO is being given because like the person who just spoke, it does seem like this is a foregone conclusion. And so I would urge the board to make that remit as narrow as possible. For instance, the SRO only responds to emergencies, like a gun being, you know, brought to school or an actual active shooter event or felony assaults, full stop. Like leave it there. For instance, in the contract it says, "This person will proactively address problems and pressures as they relate to students before such problems manifest into socially and legally unacceptable behavior." So a kind of like preventative sort of action. "These problems may involve the use of alcohol, drugs, tobacco, illegal and prohibited substances. They may also involve peer pressure and sexual activity." So those are things, for instance, that I think that would be better left to other resources that the school is already providing to students. So that the SRO's role is strictly a security role. And I would like to, that's my comment. And the question, maybe you could answer this, is what would be an example from the contracts that you're aware of, of the narrowest sort of option? Or the narrowest vision of an SRO? Does such a thing exist where the SRO only does, you know, emergencies, felony assaults, for instance? Is that, does that exist? Thank you. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
I'll tell you, I haven't seen an SRO agreement limited to just felonies or misdemeanors. They're usually generated to try to avoid arrests. So there's not a lot of discussion of look out for felonies or look out for misdemeanors or narrow your scope to these kinds of crimes. The duties are more designed to have the SRO be an educational component to the school district, to be a relationship builder and to prevent those types of crimes. Again, and if I can touch on the school discipline issue, the agreement is required by law to prevent SROs from having any type of school discipline role. That has to be specifically reserved to the school district's administration. And I know that was put in place to avoid situations where SROs are used to just act as somebody who's just disciplining students and not acting towards that educational type of role that really, that's what these agreements are designed for. So I'll tell you, I haven't seen anything where an agreement was, was really scoped towards arrests and felonies and misdemeanors. It's more of an educational type role that we try to draft.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us, this is great. I just had a few comments to make. I have two children and at HCS. It's really hard for me to speak, so one second. I just had a few questions about the, where the line ends, I guess. Where the SRO and our current in-place that already work with our students, how do they get together and say, well, this is my realm of where I take care of this? This is my realm where I take care of this? Is there going to be a point when they do have some kind of a conversation of what is carried over? How does that do allow, I guess? I just, I want to understand that part of it. Also, is this already a finalize? I was talking with my mother-in-law and she had a few comments about it as well, where it seemed that it was already put as a, it's already a finite, it was already a true, it's already going to happen. And just to make a decision, I don't see too many people in the seats today. It's a little concerning. Where it isn't also that the community itself isn't put exactly into it as well for any kind of sounding. Thank you.
He's your friend. So one of the great things about the SRO program that we have here in the sheriff's office is a lot of the decisions lie with the school when it comes to that line that you talk about. Anything that we can keep in-house, we want to keep in-house. We want the school to be the one interacting and making the disciplinary choices. We don't want the SRO doing it. Anything that can be kept in the school, we want to be kept in the school. Anything that can be kept in the school, we want to be kept in the school. So, I wish I could say a definitive line, but when it comes to discipline, when it comes to SRO getting involved, we prefer it to stay in the school. When it comes to our SRO being involved, if, say, they have to be there for a kid that's having a behavioral outburst, those kind of things don't get put in our reports. That all stays in-house with the school. Because I'm surprised it hasn't come up here tonight, but I'll bring it up. That's one thing that becomes a concern, is the freedom of education and violation of those rights. So as much as we can keep with the school, we want to keep in the school, because we do not want to mess with the Freedom of Education Act. We don't want it, we don't want to start graying that line. So anything we can keep in the school, we're going to keep in the school. Any discipline that could stay in the school, we're going to keep it in the school. We want our children to have the best education possible. The SROs are just supposed to be there as a mentor and for security purposes. That's it.
What are some examples of where it can't be kept in the school? Or some things that, no, this has to be now dealt with with law enforcement?
Making a terroristic threat. Has to. And I wouldn't even doubt that before we had SROs in school, that would always go to law enforcement. What was that?
How serious does that have to be? If a kid says offhanded, "I want to burn the school down,"
So... Yeah, so they have to be capable of carrying it out. There has to be a reasonable fear, too. So if a kid says something, but no one's scared, then it's not a crime. That's the thing. With making a terroristic threat, there are different facets to the crime level. So if a kid can say something, but if no one has a reasonable fear, it's not a criminal level, it can stay with the school. And we're not going to push for it to go to a criminal level. We do not want our youth getting arrested for things. We want them to learn the right way. If we don't have to make an arrest, we do not want to make an arrest. We want the best experiences for our children, and we don't want to make it a negative one. I know one of the concerns that keeps getting brought up, which is surprising to me, but you know, everyone has differences of opinion, one thing that keeps being brought up is more interaction with law enforcement as a negative thing. That's what we're trying to change by putting an SRO in the school. Make it a regular thing. That a law enforcement officer coming up to you and saying hi, and giving you a high-five, and giving you a hug, and asking how your day is, is a normal thing, is an everyday thing, where it's a positive thing, where you see a police car and your heart doesn't sink. That's what we're trying to change. We want that positive interaction from our law enforcement with our youth, so they feel more comfortable to come and talk to law enforcement, especially minorities. Minorities are, can be more victims of crimes than suspects of crimes. I would be terrified if my child was a minority and did not feel safe going to law enforcement. Heaven forbid something happened. We want to change that. That is the goal, to change that, so that people feel safe to come to law enforcement. It starts with our youth, making it a regular thing for law enforcement to just see you on a day-to-day basis and say hi, and ask you how your day is going, help you with your school project, ask how mom's doing at home. We want to make it a regular thing.
Sorry, and I cut you off. What were the other examples of where some kind of interaction?
Go for it. Yes, thank you.
I'll speak to that. I'm on the investigation side, so usually we want it reported to the SRO. I'm the one they call. Obviously, I'm either going to take the case myself, or I'm going to sign it out to one of my investigators. So 95% of what I see come in is either some kind of a child abuse, you know, whether it be of a sexual nature, or of an abuse, you know, physical abuse nature, or B, I'll see, like she said, a terroristic threat, which will be, somebody goes to the SRO and says, "Johnny's got a handgun in his car, or in his bed, under his house, and I overheard him telling one of his friends in lunch that tomorrow he's going to load up his AK-47 and bring it into the school." Sure enough, after school hours, we meet him in his house with his parents, and we have, we've recovered, you know, assault rifles and handguns and things from students' houses at home after hours, which that reported incident to that SRO would have been the only reason why we got that information from a student that was, that felt comfortable reporting it to them. I can tell you, I've been here 15 years, and schools that didn't have SROs before I was here, the number of those kind of calls we have were significantly less. As far as statistics, I know some people spoke to that. We're not a big city. We don't, you know, Oneida's our biggest community in the county. We're not Syracuse, we're not Buffalo, we're not New York City. We don't have the same statistics US-wide that you're going to have across the country. I mean, it's Madison County. This is a small community. We have a class size of 50 students. This is smaller than, I went to school at Whitesboro, up in Utica, you know, we had 500 kids in a graduating class. It's just a different community as far as statistics-wise. I can't tell you how many of these calls I've gone to, that we went to the kid's, you know, house and we found an assault rifle, and, you know, we made an arrest for terroristic threat, and he was never able to come to the school and use it. Was he ever planning on actually doing it? There's no way, how could anybody have a statistic on that? There's no way to predict how many tragedies we've prevented in the first place from these SROs being in place. So, that's my answer to that question. I do want to approach the podium as a parent of two students in the school now, if I may. I have a child going in the fifth grade, I have a child going in the third grade. Many of you have probably seen me at ASO Soccer, probably seen me in other community. I really look forward to my kids being able to interact with an SRO and build that relationship. They can tell you if you ask them, they used to love seeing the Mark Sheriff's car in the driveway, and, you know, I used to let them play with the sirens and the horns and stuff. Unfortunately, the SROs don't have a Mark car, so that's not a possibility, you know, but it is a good interaction. I've seen it firsthand. She does a great job with the program. They have, you know, Facebook posts and flyers and all kinds of stuff where the kids, all they do is rant and rave about these things. And I look forward to when my kids get older, to hopefully have something like that in place, where they can come home and tell me how great, you know, Officer Smith was at the school, and hey, guess what happened today? So I look forward to that as a parent, and so I just wanted to, you know, say, whatever decision you guys make, obviously as a community member, I stand by your guys' decisions.
Hi, I'm Rosie Brumbach. I have three kids in the district. Thank you for holding this. I want to, second or third, that it does seem like it's a rushed When I took the survey in July, and they asked, the survey question was about having an SRO, I said, "I don't know enough about that to really give you my answer." I don't know how that was counted in the survey, but that's, that was my response, because I didn't, and I still don't feel like I'm there yet, and I wonder that the board is there already. I have a couple of points, maybe I will get to all of them. My question is, it seems like this is an opportunity for Hamilton to gather data. Like, if there's going to be an SRO, I would want to know the interactions that don't escalate, that don't go to the sheriff's department, but the interactions that happen with students that are having emotional regulation difficulties. Like, let's keep track. Let's gather that information. Let's see what the outcome is. You know, we might as well, and I appreciate that it's seen as a positive when the sheriff's department is not involved, that it's something that is handled at the school, but the school can, can gather its own information and can keep the information anonymous, but use it in the future to make good decisions. I think that people of color, students of color, have lots of good reasons to be wary of police officers, and I am sure that there's good people that will be applying for this job, but that does not mean that they aren't affected by implicit bias, and I think that really needs to be considered. I think there was one more thing. I don't know if I'm going to be able to remember it. Maybe that was it, but thank you.
Amanda Phillips, I've got two kids in school and two kids that are going to be entering school in a year or so, and it does seem, like others have said, that it's a really rushed decision. I haven't heard anybody, I don't know what really played into this decision besides advice from the legal team. I don't know if it's coming from teachers who are not wanting to intervene in things that are going on in the hallways. I guess, I don't know why, you know, the one instance that you brought up where you arrested somebody who brought a gun to school, why do we need to have law enforcement in the school instead of just calling the police department when those bigger issues arrive? Especially since I believe you've hired a full-time social worker for this year, and the new position that Renee Merk is doing? Why not at least think about this for a little bit, see how it goes with those two new positions, see if it's really needed, and I guess what else is driving the decision? Are the teachers asking for it, as well as the legal team? Is it too much for Hamilton Law Enforcement to handle when some of those issues do arise that really need, that really need police intervention? Seems like, you know, we've got a really good community. We all have good relationships with the police that we see on the streets. Why do we need to bring it into the school building at this point, before really seeing how those two other positions go with the social worker and with Renee Merk's new position? So, if you could address that. Thanks.
The worker position through the county has been advertised since May, and we have had, the county has had one applicant that they have rejected. So we are still searching and working with the county to fill that position, but right now, that position, when we start school, we don't have anybody for that position. So we're going to continue to look for that. As far as calling HPD, HPD has been terrific to us. They respond immediately when they can, but they always can't. There's sometimes calls that they have to deal with, and they can't, can't come to us immediately. So then we call 911, and the response time sometimes is a lag. And we know with school violence, it happens very quickly. So having someone here to respond immediately, I think, would be very beneficial. And then, to answer your question about the teachers, we did a survey in June, and that's what I referred to, 72.8% of our faculty and staff felt that it was very important or very important to hire an SRO. And obviously, we take the advice of our legal team very seriously.
Hi, Susan White, a teacher here at Hamilton. I try to stay very neutral in these type of situations, but I feel that this is incredibly important. Husband being a police officer, I know all of the officers in front of me right now. Just a couple of things that I find just eye-opening for myself. Bill just spoke about the school psychologist, the school, there's another somebody who has now, a position needs to be filled, and as a teacher, it is incredibly, my strings are pulled so thin when I have an issue of a child who elopes. We have intercoms that I can call any of our administrators who are sometimes in meetings, or are sometimes dealing with other situations that they have to put out. So I might be calling on my intercom to have somebody to come and help me, and I don't have anybody that's available. If I had a SRO, or some mentor, or somebody that could be a safe person for me to get in contact with, or the students, if they are eloping, maybe that's the safe place that they go to, and I know that they're safe. There have been a few times when I've had a child run, and I have an idea where they might be. Not funny situation, but it is incredibly stressful as a teacher, when I have 22 other students behind me, one that's eloped, and I don't know what to do. So, just as a teacher point, I would love to have that person available for me to contact. That's just speaking as a teacher. I see the need for that. Just somebody, another person, a safe spot for kids to go to, or for teachers to go to. So I appreciate it. I also was one of the three or four people that watched the board meeting the last time, so I appreciate the officers coming a second time to talk to the community about it, and I appreciate you giving another opportunity for us to hear and be able to speak what we think. So, thank you so much.
I'd like to speak personally and then locally, and I'm going to try not to cry. I am rural. I am not opposed to guns. They're a tool. They're an important tool. I'm not opposed to police. They serve an important function. But I know my little brother had a mental health crisis. There was a gun present. He was unable to find adequate mental health services, and he is no longer with us. Locally, Hamilton is, again, very rural, like the conditions my little brother was in. It is difficult to find disability services in Hamilton. I know that I am not the only one who drives some distance to seek psychological services that I am unable to obtain within the town of Hamilton. I know that there are many people who have to drive much further for mental health disabilities, pediatric mental health disabilities, pediatric mental health services. I'm glad that we have hired, that we are trying to hire a social worker, and that we are making progress in getting psychological services. I don't know that that is a justification for having a 9 or 10-millimeter pistol on campus, on HCS campus. Maybe that's an argument for taking that $100,000 a year and putting out another ad for more services that our children desperately need. And I'd like any future conversation about this to also include, are we treating our children with disabilities or acute mental health problems fairly? And does that $100,000 that we're spending every year on salary plus medical plus overhead, does that take away from adding other necessary services? Thank you.
So, there's two things I wanted to address. There were comments made I wanted to try and address. So, first, I'll address the situation Ms. White brought up, because I have a son that was in her class for two years. The situation you described doesn't require law enforcement, right? It requires a social worker, or a mentor, or something like, it doesn't require someone with a weapon to assist you in that situation, or even a security officer, right? It doesn't require an actual person with a lethal force to be present in that situation. So I fully understand the overwhelming amount of work that a teacher goes through, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that you have done with my son personally. I've never actually had any issues with that, so I definitely appreciate that. Chase speaks very highly of you and has had you for two years, but what you're describing is a capacity issue, not necessarily a safety issue, right? So that's why I would, you know, ask us to think about that, right? That wasn't a safety issue. That's us just not having enough people around to help teachers when they're in need. The second part about having police officers in the school will enhance students' perceptions or relationships with officers. And I would like to push back on that, because it's not through osmosis, right? It takes a very intentional act for officers to build that type of relationship, right? And it's something that I've said to Chief also, right? That it's fine to have an officer that's just in your community, right? If I avoid them, I don't really interact with them, it's just whatever, this is an officer in my community. It takes a different level of training and intentionality for an officer to actually know who my son is, or know my name, right, or know that individual personally, right? That as you give him high-fives, you can say, "Hey Scott, hey Jim," whatever, right? That's a different level of a person that would have to be in that position, right? So, I mean, I don't know, you know, how much the board is involved in that hiring, or what that process would look like, but if that decision is made, I implore you all to really take that into consideration. Every time Chief sees me around town, he actually stops and speaks to me, right? I can't say that, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I can't speak for everybody, every person of color in the community, right? But that makes a difference, in my opinion, right? That has not been the case in other communities I have been in, right? That has not been the case in other communities I have been in, right? Where, you know, and I've lived all over, that the chief of police or any officer, right? When I first came, you know, I told Chief, when I first came to Hamilton, past police officers all the time, there's only, there's probably only a handful of black men, adult black men in this community. None of them spoke to me. Not hello, not welcome, nothing, right? And like I said, there's only a few of us. So it's pretty easy to realize that someone's newer to the community. And Chief was the first person, that was because we were on calls for something else, right? That I built, had an opportunity to build a relationship with him, but that's because of the privilege of my position, right? I had the ability to interact with Chief more directly because of the role that I'm in at the university, right? Whereas there's tons of, there are tons of others who would not have that other opportunity. So if the board does decide to go in that direction, I really implore you to really do the work of finding someone who will spend the time to get to know our students, to build the relationships with our students, which is just not any old officer, right? Some people are just there to do their job and they're in and out, but do they have the time to learn about people with different cultures, with different abilities, right? And actually sit down and get to understand who those individuals are and how they can engage with them. Thank you.
Absolutely, 100% to what you said. To go in the hiring process, obviously they don't have certain credentials in order for us to accept them as an applicant. And then what we would do is we would forward them to the board and the board would do their rigorous process, I'm sure, of interviewing the applicant. And that is all things that we take into consideration. This is, this is a special type of job. I actually have a SPO right now considering on taking the Madison position. He's like, oh, well, it's up to you. No, 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 no. This is not up to me. This is up to you because it takes a special person, a special kind of person to go in the school and do this job. So absolutely, 100% to what that gentleman just said, we will and we do take that all into consideration because it does take someone who intentionally wants to build those relationships and it takes work. I will say that. Thankfully, all my SROs are wonderful. They go above and beyond. My SRO at Stockbridge, he coaches baseball. My, two of my SROs in CAS, they go to the dances, they go to the games on their own time because they want to see the kids and interact with the kids. They don't even get paid for it, they just go. So thankfully, the guys that come out for these jobs, it's not just someone looking to get a paycheck, it's someone who cares about their community and wants to be involved. So yes, 100%, absolutely.
Can you clarify the hiring process? We determined that we have a meeting.
Chase said we would, the board would not be part of it, or should we?
No.
We would maybe send some questions or something. We could have an interview process. Okay. But we have that exact process.
I'm looking around the room and I've seen most people come up to the microphone, so I'm... Yes, you can come up.
Okay.
Yes. So we have one other person to come forward unless somebody else would like to come forward. But again, I'm trying to respect everybody, but also understand that we do have a meeting after this and so we'd like to transition to that at some point, but I don't want to rush. So if I can just get some... Yep.
You are all on the same page. But if you'd like to transition, we transition to the...
Please, I'll go back.
Is the meeting going to be about this issue?
There is, there is.
So good evening, my name is Morgan Larson. I work here at school. Two kids came through school, the second one just graduated this spring. My wife is on the school board. I had the opportunity after the last board meeting to talk to the sheriff's deputies and the SRO that came and presented. I spent about a half an hour or more talking to them and I agree that the hiring is critical. I think many of your fears can be at least somewhat mitigated, if not completely eliminated, by who we hire. And I think the language of the agreement needs to have, be in there that the school district needs to be, have approval of every SRO that comes in the building. I've heard of other places in, you know, I was talking to someone in a different county, they're saying, yeah, they just, if the SRO is out that day, the county just puts in whoever's available from the sheriff's department. Immediately, my actual reaction was, they're not welcome. Because the training that they have for diversity training, and I can't think of all the terms right I'm speaking like this, but it's critical that the officer that I met, the SRO that I met, really made me comfortable with the program because he was in it like you are asking for. It was, this was, he really enjoyed it. He wanted to make the communication, the connections with the students. He really, truly felt that it was critical that, he talked to every student that wanted to every day. If a student didn't want him near him, he didn't go near him. But if he wanted to do the high five, he did the high five. And I really got the sense that the way the program's laid out in the county is restorative practices, et cetera, it's not punitive, it's growth and relationship-based. And that this officer was also fully on board and fully engaged with that and that, yes, they're here and there is, obviously there's chances for abuse. Like a teacher can say, I just can't handle this student today, I'm going to call the SRO. So, you know, monitoring of the program is also going to be very important, especially at the beginning until we know it's working well. So there's a lot of concerns still. I mean, a lot of the concerns you brought up, that everybody's brought up are real. And we're not, the only way to, if we start, if we go with this program, the only way to address them is to keep on top of it, is to have the community's input continual and monitoring the program both inside and outside and doing it as a group. And if there's problems, if there's, if there's relationships that, you know, parents think, hear about that aren't good, we need to know about it and we can address it. I mean, you know, the students, the student body and the faculty and staff in this school has a great relationship for the most part, but obviously there are students that, you know, have, struggle a little more in school for whatever behavioral problems or whatever it might be. Who knows what's going on at home? I don't always ask because it's not really in my business, but if they want to share, I'll listen. And I think that's the key for us at this school district is we're all in this trying to do what's best for the students, help them grow, keep them safe. And like I said, originally, beginning before the last board meeting, I was really on the fence because the statistics, all the statistics was on the negative side. But I think the way this program is built and if we hire the right person, I believe that this program can be positive. Do I guarantee it? Of course not. I will never, I wouldn't say that. But I do have high hopes that it would be a positive program. The agreement being a critical part and then the very most critical part is the SRO themselves, whoever that happens to be.
On the agreement and the monitoring piece, I think that's really important. Most agreements have a termination clause and they're almost always with clause. So you can get out of this scot-free if there's some type of violation of the agreement or some type of issue. With these agreements, we always have without clause termination, which means if they're, the school district is a weekend and we decide the person we hire, we don't like the individual, they're not right for the role, there's any type of other issue, the school district can cancel at any time without cause just by sending notice to the police department. So again, our experience has been that these programs have been successful. I've never, I've never issued a termination notice on one of these. But to the point of the constant monitoring, if there's ever an issue that comes up that the community becomes aware of, that the school board becomes aware of, it's something that terminating the agreement is always on the table throughout the one-year term.
Just in closing, from the Hamilton police standpoint, I keep hearing about data and data, as Dorsey's probably well aware, growing up in a law enforcement family. The data-driven world we live in now is, that's the way it is. And unfortunately, in law enforcement, we keep, it sounds like we just keep having excuses for why we don't have the data and there's really no way to know. You know, putting an SRO in the schools is like putting a speed limit sign up and there's only, I guess, way to reference in that aspect of, we know if cars keep crashing in a sharp corner because the speed limit's too high, we lower the speed limit. We don't know how many lives it saves after the fact. We only know how many people got hurt or injured before that. And it's the same way with an SRO program. You'll never know the data of how many crises it prevented or incidents. Going back to the incident where we did have a gun in the school, I feel like that could have been extremely tragic for this community. It was way after the fact that we even learned of it, it was at the end of the school day if I remember correctly. We were scrambling, a snowstorm was coming, trying to find where the gun was, trying to find the students, interviewing as many as we could. And a large number of students were aware that this gun was in the school and never notified anybody. We're building that relationship with an SRO in the school, could have prevented that from happening the way it did. It could have been, you know, much sooner to have that in the school. It wasn't a BB gun. I mean, this was a real handgun taken from out of town and brought in. It wasn't a parent's, they didn't even have weapons in the house, the parents. It was taken from a relative's house on vacation and ended up back inside the school in a kid's bookbag. And it was shown to other people, so it's very, very hard to compile data when you don't know. It's like taking the drunk off the street. He didn't kill anybody that night, but he could have. We just don't know whose life it saved. It could have saved his own life or somebody else's life getting, you know, a drunk driver off the street. Or stopped somebody for speeding today, he could have spent speeding tomorrow and injured himself or somebody else or a family. So it's very hard to compile data in law enforcement of what it did change by having it in place as far as that standpoint for preventing crisis situations. So I hope that kind of sheds a little bit of light on it because it's, I know it seems one-sided and in a data-driven community, Colgate has taught me so much, being in such a diverse community, of not thinking about how I grew up and some of my personal biases of not thinking, you know, I've always trusted law enforcement, but that's the community I grew up in. Not thinking about somebody from an urban area that didn't trust the police because they're out mugging people off the streets, beating them up and back alleyways, that doesn't happen in Hamilton. And that was one thing that I've learned in this community, working with Colgate, because you see everything. There's people from all over the world here that have, you know, different feelings about law enforcement and we establish those relationships on our own in Hamilton. As I expressed to the board, the importance of being involved in the hiring process to make sure the right candidate is chosen for the school. And I guess a little bit of fact of the village, you know, there's generally during the daytime, there's only one officer on duty at a time. And we could be assisting the state police or this county on a call, or we could be busy on a call. So if something did happen at Hamilton Central, doesn't always mean that I'm available. If we had somebody in the school, that's just another resource in the school as well as myself. I'm in the school now anyways and most parents probably don't even realize it. And it's not a problem now because I'm here all the time, but it doesn't mean that I'm always available to be in the school. I had the pleasure of meeting Dorsey's wife probably two weeks ago. I didn't necessarily introduce myself properly, but I saw her on the sidewalk with his daughter and her bicycle chain fell off and I could have just drove by. But I stopped and I said, do you need some help? And those are the same relationships you build in the community. His wife doesn't have a clue who I am. I said, I'd try to help her, the chain was off, the crank was falling out of the bicycle. She got me some pliers, I tightened everything up, got the chain back on and, you know, said, I hope your day goes better than what it started out and have fun. And, you know, that's, that's the beauty of being in this community like Hamilton where you get to know the people you're with and around every day to build that relationship amongst everyone else in the, in the school district. So it's not like somebody would be hired and just thrown to the school and that's just their job. There's going to be a process of following up and reports reviewed and how's things going and it's, you know, it's all a learning experience and just another tool for everybody. Thank you.
Everybody, first of all, I know how hard it is to speak in front of a group, in front of a mic. It takes a lot of courage to tell your personal stories, to share about your feelings. So I thank you for taking your time this evening to do that. We are going to wrap this section up. It will take just a minute. We do have one board member who is remote for our meeting, so we have to get him online. So they'll just give us, just give us a minute for that part. If you do choose to leave, thank you for coming. And if you choose to stay, we are happy to have you at our meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Figure out how to get him on here. We'll take, we'll take five minutes while we get organized. We'll take, we'll take five minutes while we get organized. All right, I'd like to call the August 11th meeting to order. It is 7:46 PM. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual authority, justice, law.
Do we have any additions to the agenda?
No.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a, hold on. It's, yeah, I just hit the button up. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th, 2022 reorganizational and regular meetings and the July 16th board workshop. One second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda is 3.1 through 4.4. As submitted.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion on the tax levy, the district emergency response plan, transportation requests, fall coaching, or non-resident student? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have our first general public comments at this time. If any would like to come forward to the microphone, you're welcome to do so. I'll give just a second here. I see none online. Seeing none, we'll save that for the next time slot if needed. I'm going to do, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Carolyn Stoddard as physical education teacher effective August 30th with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion, I was just trying to see if I could do them all together, but I don't think I can. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Jeremy West as probationary elementary physical education teacher effective September 1st, 2022, as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Wayland Smith as probationary one-year elementary teacher, September 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
I'll move. Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm nodding to Travis so he knows that I'm getting his vote here. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Hannah Wisnowski. I did good on that one. I'm awful with people's names, sorry. As probationary part-time teacher aide, bus aide, effective September 1, 2022, as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move.
One second.
Any discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of.
Juana Montoya Aceves.
Thank you. Juana Montora, Montoya Aceves. As probationary part-time teacher, bus aide, effective September 1, recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
I'll move.
One second.
And the only discussion is, I'm just sorry, I didn't want to mess up your name, so thank you for letting me have a moment. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Barry Lamb as probationary cleaner, effective August 15th, 2022, as recommended by the director of facilities, business manager, and superintendent.
I'll move. One second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the following coordinators for the 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the principals and superintendents, and they are listed.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of the following mentors for the 2022, 23 school year as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion? The only hesitation was we will update those dates and Debbie was, okay, Debbie's got the right one, it was just not updated online. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the attached list of extracurricular, co-curricular advisors for 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the principals and superintendent.
Move.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I need a motion to approve the 20, the 2021-2022 APR implementation certification, certification for the 2022-2023 school year and submit to SED as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move. One second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to do the motion or we want to do a discussion before the motion? Motion. I need a motion to enter into the contract with Madison County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officer Services during the 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move.
I'm going to do a roll call on this.
Any discussion?
I'm going to do a roll call.
Well, we'll get discussion first.
I'll say what I think we heard here tonight was a case where reasonable people can disagree on objectives, or not necessarily objectives, but can disagree on how we get to a place, but we all agree that we want the same thing. We want safety of our students. We want our students to be, feel more secure, be more secure. But in order for an SRO program to work, I think it needs buy-in from, from everybody. And we need people to feel that the district has done its due diligence in forming a contract that is solid, coming up with an interview process that is solid, and taking the steps we need to make sure that this works. I have my own personal feelings about it. I'm trying to put those aside and think about what is the, the most practical and the most useful thing for, for students. But my own personal feeling is whatever the board decides to do, I'll stand behind and support to try and make it work as best as possible. But I think we need to have a community that feels like they're in that place too, that they can accept a decision that they may not agree with, but that they'll support because they know that it was done with the best of intentions. And I'm not sure that we're at that point where we have a community that feels that way, or a community that feels like they've been included completely in the conversation at this point.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and say that, that I think the comments tonight reinforced feelings that I carried into this meeting, and that is that we need to take time and we need to have more discussions. We need to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's and, and I don't want to put this off forever. I don't want to say, we just need to keep talking about it, you know, whether we say we're going to come back in a few weeks or whatever, but I, I, I think the discussion tonight reaffirms to me that there is more discussion to be had. Before entering into a contract.
A split because I, I feel that we had that, we've, we've had over a month since we started the true conversations. I understand where the community's stating and coming from. The last meeting, if we were had, were to have had it on as a vote, I would have been right there as well. But because we had that meeting and now we've had this meeting and there's been the month to do research and there's been the month to learn about the program. And the fact that this contract is only a one-year contract makes me feel a little bit better about possibly entering into it. If this was a long-term contract, I would not. One year to give us the ability to see, one year to give us the ability to collect our data. I think that's what helps me feel like this is the time to do it. I'm, I guess I'm not opposed to waiting a short time, but school starts in less than a month and interviews take a while and to find the right person. Even if we were to enter into a contract or say we approve it now, I don't know if we could start school with somebody. But those are the reasons, I guess, that I'm feeling okay about moving forward is because I do agree that more data is needed, but I think we need our data. I think we need our students and such. So those are my thoughts.
My concern is the data I've seen, the research hasn't shown me that there's an overwhelming benefit to having school resource officers. That they, it hasn't shown that those schools are safer, that those schools are more secure. And I have seen evidence in the research that shows that there are negative aspects of it, that it does negatively affect students. I am sympathetic to what our local officials are saying, that maybe things work different here in our, in our county, in our district, and I do hope that would be the case. But I think if we move forward with a community that feels that they're either not part of the process or being, or there's a division there, that that level of success is going to be more difficult to attain, if that makes sense. I also worry about saying, well, let's try it and then we can evaluate it because that trying evaluating may be, it's just another way, I just feel like there's so many ways in our society that we've failed to make good decisions as adults and the result is always that it comes down to kids. We say, we don't come up with sensible regulations of guns, and so now we have to put kids in a situation where they're doing, in drills to protect themselves from a shooter, where they're being put in situations where schools are more militarized, where they're being put in situations where there's another gun in school to protect them. And it's because we failed. And so I don't want a situation where we say, let's see how it works, and the cost of that may be borne out by somebody, but if it's borne out by somebody, it's a kid. And if things aren't working, that might not work for a specific child. And even if data were to me, I also have been thinking about what's the threshold I'm looking for, for who this works for? If it works for 75% of kids, does that make me accept it? 80%? 99%? 99.9%? But if it doesn't work for one kid, to me, that's a huge deal. And the fact that we have so few students of color in our school means even more so that we have to care about this and worry about those issues. And it's not just a race issue, it's also a socioeconomic class issue for me, that students of a socioeconomic class, when they have interactions, and I would say punitive, maybe it's not even punitive, but it's a, an investigation where one kid, some kids know that one kid is talking to a police officer, being investigated, what does that say to everybody else? And necessarily, the officer shouldn't be saying what they talked about, or that this kid was, you know, innocent or, you know, wasn't actually a big deal. That should be a private thing. But then what does every other kid say? And you, you all know as well as I do that the perception of a child by his, by his, his or her peers, by, even by their teachers, may negatively affect them whether or not they did it. So it could be a very positive interaction with the law enforcement that results in negative consequences. negative consequences for the child. So at this point, I'll just say, I would move that we table this issue until we've had a chance to more thoroughly gain input from the community. And we've also outlined more properly, which is something I've thought of tonight, I'm sorry to bring it up, if I'd thought about it earlier, I would have brought this up to you, Bill, more thoroughly outlined what the interview process will be and garner from the community some questions that we could use in our interview process. And we have those available that we could share. This is what our board will be asking during the interview process. So I would make that as a motion, that we table this discussion until we come up with those things.
I just want to comment that, again, as Cory said, I think we're all here. We all have the same end goal. I think that, again, we have given time to this. We've gotten very minimal feedback. I think if we're hearing from our teachers and our administrators that this will add another layer of protection, it will be another layer of somebody for our students to build a relationship with. I can tell you right now, you're never going to hire a social worker for $19,000 a year. We can't even get one right now for what we are offering. And I think that in order for us, and again, this is my personal opinion, for us to serve the students, in my opinion, this is something, it made me feel good tonight knowing that in this contract, there will be a no-cost termination. At any time that we feel this person, for any way, shape, or form, is not serving our students the way that they should be or starting to have a negative impact, we can terminate this immediately. We can say, two weeks into the school year, wait a minute, this isn't the layer that we wanted to add. This isn't the type of interaction that we want. That makes me also feel more comfortable with proceeding with approving this contract and taking, you know, we do have time. We don't even know if anyone's going to be applying for this. So I think that we do have time to solicit feedback for questions that can be asked and come up with a hiring process of how we're going to do. I also feel a lot better knowing that we, as board members, will also be involved in this hiring process, which I was unsure of before tonight. And I already have a million questions in my head that I'm drafting in emails, Bill, of things that I want included in that hiring process. And, again, I just think that in today's day and age, any resource that we can give to our kids, to have somebody to talk to and to feel safe with and to help those within our school, that's what I feel that I'm here as a board member to.
I guess my question for the potential motion on the table is timeline. So if we're tabling it, what does that look like? What timeline are we talking about that looks reasonable, but also potentially for somebody that feels ready? Maybe. I'm still on that maybe spot, but what's that timeline look like in your mind?
Well, I would think we'd need to ensure there's broader community feedback and support. I think it's hard to do that during the summer when a lot of people aren't here or a lot of people aren't really as tuned in to what's going on at the school. And so I would think, to me also, I don't see a rush for this. I see much more of a rush for trying to figure out how to get a social worker and a psychologist into the school. I'd rather see those things. So if we were to take this to the next board meeting and vote on it then, I think that's a reasonable timeline. But I'm also willing to say, if it takes, if we can get more feedback in two weeks and we meet in a special meeting, I'll come back and meet in a special meeting, whatever anybody wants.
I'll say the same. I'm willing to come back to a special meeting. I also feel like deferring this one month to, and again, I want to push back on minimal feedback. This was a large turnout for a board meeting. This is not minimal feedback, and it was, there were a lot of questions and concerns raised. And so I want to acknowledge that. I don't think two weeks is enough time. Two weeks is still summer. Two weeks is people aren't back. Two weeks is, so I think by the next board meeting, but we need to be active in the meantime. We need to be active, we need to be proactive, and we need to be making a discussion. And if this is something that is going to go forward, then I think there are a lot of pieces that need to be drafted, including how this contract reads, including the interview process, including what data needs to be gathered. It's a little bit concerning to me to say that we can't collect data. We can collect data. There is a list of calls. That data can be disaggregated to say, who were these calls made? You know, like, who were these students affected by these calls? To Cory's point, right, like, even if it turned out that there was nothing wrong, there were students affected by these calls. And so who was affected by these calls? There is data there that is, and I understand their system is, and I've worked in county systems, archaic, but to say that we can't collect data means nobody's asking the questions. And so if we are going to do this, we need to be very clear about what data is collected, whether we're collecting it or they're collecting it, and very clear about what we're watching. And I think we need to have this discussion on the table about the fears that were raised tonight and know that we are watching, watching for benefit. I told you from the beginning that I've always gone into this looking for evidence of benefit and can't find, so we can watch. So I'm, you know where I am, so.
Our next meeting's the second day of school.
Michelle, there's a motion on the table, so is anybody seconded?
Not yet. We're still in discussion on-
Because the discussion on that motion would happen, so for one, there's no discussion on-
No, Cory put the motion on the table.
Cory put a motion down, so is there a second?
Yes, I will second the motion to table.
Okay.
Okay, there's no debate on-
I don't, yeah, whatever we need to do.
We need to- Yeah, we got to have a second to the first motion that's on the current table on the agenda.
Yes, Jen did that one, yeah.
Okay. Wait, are we, Michelle's got to read, are we going to table?
But motion to table, it has to go right to vote. There's no debate on a motion to table.
But we haven't seconded that because we were still in discussion on the other.
I seconded it.
Well, now she did.
Well, because-
Because you were asking about it, but that's why we were discussing, because I wanted to have discussion on the whole thing before we moved to table or moved to move on. So that's why I didn't ask for a second on that motion on purpose, because we were still in discussion. Part of Cory's discussion was a motion, and nobody seconded it on, and I didn't state it on purpose because I wanted to continue discussion. So I was trying to figure out where we were headed so that I would know, are we doing that motion? Are we seconding it? And then if so, we can't have discussion on that, can we, that motion?
It's not debatable.
It's not, right, so then it has to go to immediate vote, and I wasn't ready to vote on that, so that's why we were continuing the discussion.
I just asked if there was a second because I didn't hear, knowing that, you know-
Yeah.
Not knowing that was going to shut that down, I will retract that second.
I just- Yeah, you can't, which is fine.
If you give me two seconds, I can figure out what you can do.
No, it's, I think, I mean, we can just vote on the motion to table, because that's what's at hand right now. Ellen seconded the motion to table.
So what happens to the first motion?
It just-
It's avoided because we have a new motion.
It just sits until the next meeting when we take it off the table. So it just hangs out on the table for a month.
So, yeah, we got to vote to table that.
Right, so. So all those in favor of tabling until the next meeting?
Do you want to do it one by one or?
Let's do it one by one, just the-
On the record?
Yep.
So we're going to do a roll call to table the School Resource Officer contract. Michelle, how do you vote?
To table. I'm just still processing what I'm doing.
Table, we're tabling.
I move to table. I, aye.
Aye. A and Jen?
Nay.
Cory?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Travis?
Nay.
The motion has been tabled.
Motion has been tabled.
For next month. Travis, are you staying on or are you jumping off? I can't hear you.
I'll stay on until administrative reports.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the following overnight trips for the 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent. The Board of Education reserves the right to cancel the trips if circumstances should arise concerning the safety of the students. I'll move. Discussion? I just want to say thank you to the teachers for getting these in. I appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're on to discussion of the district goals. I'd like to find them first. Hold on. I haven't scrolled far enough. Are they under the public section? There. When we had our workshop, we put together our final draft of our district goals. Bill, you met with your team after that. I'd like to know, generally speaking, were there any comments, concerns, anything that we need to worry about or change as part of our district goals?
No.
For the board members, we've had time to think, which we like. Is there anything that we wish to tweak or change with the goals?
Those on bill and his team feel like this is manageable for the year.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
We'll do our best.
Ongoing is what it is at the end of the year, then that's what it is at the end of the year. I mean, not on all of them, but you should get a couple of things done. Obviously, you know, we've had circumstances in the past where things have preceded some of the goals, and we understand that happens. But if that doesn't happen, which God forbid, we really don't want it to, it would be great if we can focus towards these through the year. We do not have to vote on them, correct? Okay, so we can take draft off of the word and we can post them?
And I'll just say this in a public, I was supposed to put a draft of our vision together. It's still on my list.
Still envisioning.
Still visioning.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time that Saturday putting those together. Again, I think the school boards group did a disservice to themselves by not allowing us to teach other schools how to do board goals.
I did have a discussion with somebody about that, so.
I almost did too.
They said it was because there's already a board, there's like a, it is but sponsored board goal, and I talked to him about it. It's pretty similar to what we're going to do anyway, so it's a less, but he did say if we wanted to somehow be there, it's like our version of this participated in these sessions somehow. I told him, "If he didn't hear about it, it'll be by Friday, I'm worried about it."
No.
It was two weeks ago.
So again, I think the way we process and the way we go through doing our goals, the last couple of years have been beneficial to us and to the district as a whole, and grateful to all those that carry them out for us and get to work through them, so thank you. Anything else in discussion for district goals, other than we know that they will get posted by the start of school? Yes, Chris? Thumbs up, okay. Travis, it's getting dark there. Have a great night. Travis is signing off. Debbie, if you want to record that. We're good there. Bye. Thank you, Travis. Administrators' reports, they were written, and as we discussed in the past, we will only ask questions if we have them. The one thing I wanted to say in Chris's report, so I'll start. I'm really excited about this wireless guest thing. I think it's great that guests will have the ability to log in if needed and something that our school hasn't had in the past, and so thank you. I think that's great.
I just have a quick comment to mark, and it wasn't on your report, it's just a comment in general. Thank you so much for getting the school supply lists out as quickly as you did for middle school, high school, and for combining some of them the way you did. Like, it has been so difficult in the past to, like, do that last minute, so thank you so much for making that happen.
I second that for both, for both schools.
I don't have any in elementary, but Heather, I'm sure you're doing great.
Mark, I think somebody suggested this on our secondary steering committee once, that what if we just aggregated, you know, we look at those lists and say, "We need X number of folders, X number of notebooks, X number of these things," and then just told the PTO, you know, "How much would it cost to buy all of this for everybody?" Maybe next year we could just ask the PTO, you know, if they sent me something that said, "If you paid $60, you know, if we raise this much money, we can get those for everybody," and then put that out in the community. I thought we'd raise more money than-
And combine with what we already have, we have a closet outside with binders and notebooks in it as well.
It would be great.
That people donate or-
Oh, my God, we can donate stuff? Finally, like, barely-used stuff?
Yeah. And so we would have that as well, so to advertise that and make sure people know those things are as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be a really, and then I just want to make one other comment. Kevin is not here. I'd said, really helpful thing, what do people do during the summer at schools? Somebody commented something about that. SROs also go off during the summer, and it made me laugh. I'm sure every teacher was at home sipping a martini.
Except for Susan.
Reading through a bunch of textbooks. No way.
No.
So I appreciate all that you're all doing during the summer and all the people doing, if they're not in the building, they're doing, I'm sure they're working at home and doing a lot of work during the summer as well.
The other thing I didn't, I don't think I saw, was we had camps this year, educational camps, I think in the elementary too. There was some, there's some learning happening this summer.
We had a summer program.
We had a summer program. Middle school and high school had camps, and I've heard of two of them. One, Jen and I got to come and visit, and the other one I heard was wonderful, the photography one.
Yep, just draw the photography.
And so I just, I think it's a great way to, I loved the interaction of the mix of grades. When we walked in the room, I mean, my son was in one, but he only really knew one other. I guess there was three from his class or four from his class, but the rest of the kids weren't, and so he had to learn who other people were and on top of learning for a week or two in the summer, which is wonderful. So.
I thought that was great, too. Riker partook in the photography one, and he- Riker partook in the photography one, and he was, and I said, like, here's these opportunities. You need to pick one that sounds most interesting to you. Would really like to encourage you to attend one of these, and he was like, well, if I had to do any, I'd do this. And the first day, you know, waking him up at regular school time was, you know, it was fun. But the other days, he got right up and he was like, Mom, why is this only four days? Like, I want to do more of this, and he really thought it was, was great. So love to see those programs grow, you know, throughout the years, and it was really great.
And thank you to the teachers that did those.
I want to comment really quickly on, on Corey's, um, comment about, like, the school supplies. So a couple, well, I guess it was more than a couple of years ago now, but, um, a few years ago with the PTO, there actually is programs out there, um, that we did explore, it didn't really go beyond that, but that you actually, um, have a company create these boxes, and it's all like that. So they'll put your notebooks in there, you know, everyone, and it's all, it's like Crayola crayons, you know? It's not like the bottom of the barrel crayons. But it's an affordable way, and basically you don't have to school shop, and you can, you can order this box. And they, they did keep the prices pretty reasonable. I felt it was better than I could do in some situations. Um, and then they just have the box waiting for the kids on the first day of school or like the day before school so they can put it in their locker. So maybe that's something that we do want to talk to the PTO about, maybe exploring that again, because it was. Again, I would totally be one of those parents to be like, yep, spend this for me.
If they open up the unit, replace one of those. Like, you said, you can.
Purchase a box.
You can buy a pizza from, you know, coupon for a pizza, or you could just pay for some school supplies, and then any excess money will go to the PTO.
Right.
I'd gladly do that.
Yeah.
Quite possible, unless if I paid the same amount I paid for school supplies to the PTO.
But you could count that many more kids, yeah.
I'd be very happy for that, so I think a lot of people would.
Yeah. I agree.
And I can't say I, I don't take any credit for that, somebody brought that, I wish I could remember. It was one of our steering committees at the point, do you remember that?
Yes, I do, yeah, now that you bring it up. But it wasn't me. Somebody else was much smarter than me.
Um, it moves us to Bill's report.
Any questions on the report I submitted? Matt, do you want me to talk type of content or do you want?
Uh, yeah, you can do any specifics.
Wait, we, we got, oh, yeah, you can do that one first, we got knowledge sharing first, but.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I can share some, so I was at a, um.
Yeah.
A NISBA DEI committee meeting, and there was something I want to share from there. There's a lot that we did, but we were kind of focused on what could NISBA do to help school boards. We were focused on that. So it wasn't much of an educational thing. But one thing I did learn there that I didn't know, maybe some of you know this, is that NISBA has every year, I know you've gone to vote on those, uh, you know, the initiatives or whatever resolutions that NISBA puts out. I didn't know you, we could submit them as a board.
I mentioned it.
You did mention it.
I do mention it.
But we should, uh, you know, maybe we should think about that for our next goal setting. Is, is there an initiative, uh, resolution we'd like to submit? And those resolutions can then be co-sponsored by other districts, so maybe if there's something specific to central New York or to rural schools, we could also connect with some other schools and get some, some kind of resolution added there, so. But I think when, um, when their resolutions come out this year, I'm gonna, now I know more about the process. I'm gonna look closer, more closely at what they are and kind of think about them before we, we vote. But maybe we could also add our meeting, add a meeting, or we could have read all the resolutions, and then we can give feedback to, I think it's, is it just one of us, right, you, you should go?
No, that's me, yeah.
And then when you vote, you'll have kind of more feedback on how to vote on certain of the resolutions that are on the table. If that would help you.
So actually, that was my knowledge sharing, is that I have registered, and I will be attending, um, the annual business meeting on October seventeenth to vote on all those resolutions. At least I am prepared this year, we were forewarned that it would be about four to five hours. Last year I was not prepared for it to be that long. So, yeah, those usually do come out in advance for us to review all those, and I would gladly welcome the opportunity to have a special meeting. I will let you know, like, it will probably not be an hour-long special meeting. Like, last year there was over, I think there was like a hundred and five resolutions, um, that were voted on.
Do we need a special meeting, or could we just create them ourselves and send you?
Yeah, I think somehow it'd be helpful to give you some feedback.
But if we gave them to you individually?
Right, yeah, no, absolutely.
Um, and maybe we could, maybe there'd be some you'd highlight as discussing as a group meeting too.
Yeah.
Kind of discuss it. The other thing on that was, um, we can, they can, there's amendment process as well, so maybe before that, we could also think about if there's somebody who wants to amend it as well. I don't know what they'll be, there'll probably be something about transportation there, and Bill and I were talking about this, that's gonna be a big issue, and, and, um, Matt can talk to us as well. This move to all electric vehicles in the near future is a big issue for us, and they can say more than I. But trying to get our kids to go play a game in.
Right.
In, uh, Old Forge, and have a bus that then has to recharge and come back. In the winter, those, the mileage goes down and the charging goes slower, so there might be some room there for some kind of request or some kind of leniency, right? Or we're gonna have to restructure where students go play sports because they couldn't, we couldn't make a Door, Old Forge on it.
Well, what about, like, the trip to Albany, that I know, like, one of our elementary classes stayed.
All these questions you're bringing up.
Official world are being asked, um, it's going to happen. And that's the other sort of consensus, consensus within the industry is, there's all these questions, there's a ton of uncertainty, but it is going to happen. So, yeah, we do need to get out of, we do need to prepare. I've, I've read some, some, um, instances from other business officials that have posted through the ASBO listserv that while going through capital projects and having electrical engineers on site, they have asked, um, electrical engineers to sort of assess their bus garage in their existing capacity. There are districts that currently don't have service to their buildings that would be, that would be able to accommodate the load to transition their fleet. So, um, I don't think that's a problem that we're gonna have. So it's gonna be a wide range of, of issues that different districts have. I, and this is high in the sky, we have had no conversations, but, you know, i- if, if the extent of this mandate sort of reaches out beyond just school buses, it may be an, an opportunity for collaboration in a more regional hub, if you will. You know, with first transit, uh, service providers like Bernie and that. So, yeah, it, it's, it's going to happen, and it's something that's gonna be on the radar. Certainly in the next couple of years, something we're gonna have to plan for. It also might be an opportune time for us because, you know, our, as we've mentioned through the building condition survey, and will be noted again this year as we go through that process. You know, our, our bus garage is really, uh, it's in a bad location. It's, it's bigger than it needs to be, um, it's really not fully functional. So it may be an opportune time for us to really reimagine how our transportation looks, both actual transporting of students, but both physically here on campus too, so. There's, we anticipate there's gonna be grant funding available, and we're hopeful, so.
Yeah, I think NISBA can add to the legislative fund as well, and lots of tradition. You may try to allocate a million dollars to that funding. But whether there's funding still, something there, so.
Right. Yeah. Yep.
Um, speaking of NISBA.
In October. Yes. And we need to sign up for it.
Is time open?
Yeah, I think it's open, the registration is open. Um, so I think it would be good for us to register. I do believe we decided, um, and I could be wrong, but that we're gonna drive back and forth. Maybe one or two cars so that if people had different timeframes to leave, we could do that. But, um, I do think it's important outside of Jen, because she's not in town, that all of us go. It's the end of October.
I have it on my calendar.
So Debbie, if you could just send an email quick to us all with the dates and have us reply to you, and then we can, you and I can connect and register. Okay? And I only say send an email because Travis isn't on, and just so everybody can look at a calendar with the dates that. But if we could do that before September, I think that would be good so that we can, like, I have to ask for time off. Everybody probably does, so like, we, we need to make sure that we can get that in works.
In our meeting, they had pins. It was in a pin, so I just took it out.
Oh, I like pins.
Me too.
I like free stuff. I'm not gonna turn that down.
And to just publicly, like, put on the public record, I'm not able to attend because my son will be graduating from trade school.
Yay! That's a good reason to not join us.
That's my reason. Won't just, it's not just family vacation.
Um, with that. Bill and Matt, are you serious we're gonna be ready on September first?
What do you mean?
Yes.
Yes, I like those shaking of hands.
We'll be ready. That's what we're being told.
Do you need hands moving things back into the classroom?
Well, we may need that. So there's our report where we are. They are making progress. Things are starting to come together. The gym is almost fully painted, the lights are up. Elementary classrooms are starting to be put back together. Doing extensive work in the LGI and, uh, high school library. Locker rooms are moving along. So we had a job meeting Wednesday, yesterday morning.
Is it the same through working on the LGI and library as everything else?
It's the same, there are five prime contracts. Five, yeah. Different scopes of work, but yes, it's the same five prime contractors working in all areas of the building.
So if we need a. Pull from the LGI that doesn't need to be done September one to quickly finish something at the end of the month? That's a potential?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know how this works, but that's just.
We are very clear with our deadlines, at September first, faculty and staff are back, and September seventh, students are back, and those, those dates are non-negotiable. So at our meeting yesterday, they assured us that we're on track for those dates. There's a lot of work in a very short amount of time.
There is. And I know, like, things do happen, like, certain things do happen, like, you walk by the gym and it looks like a mess, but it takes a couple hours to clean it up, and like, woo, it's done, right? Some things don't look, look worse than I want it to, so there's a lot that needs to be done.
There's still a lot of work to be done.
We've got a month.
But it's coming along.
I love this, a lot of great is a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Been on our chart for a while, so.
You know, if you think back to December of two thousand eighteen, when the referendum was put forth, and, you know, I, I recall at the time, King and King getting into numbers and saying they planned for twenty percent contingency and twenty-two percent inflation, and you think, wow, that seems like a lot. Well, here we are. And, you know, when they talk about those twenty percent contingency for discovered conditions, we are running into that, and then certainly with inflation. Because of the, the, the required bid processes that we have to follow, and because of things that have changed, you know, it's a good thing. I do also just want to say, related to the project, I want to commend, first and foremost, Randy and his crew. Getting a school building ready under normal circumstances is enough of a challenge. This is now, Mark and I were actually laughing about it the other day. This is now the third summer in a row, two with COVID, and now one with construction, that we have not had sort of a normal summer. His crew is, is waiting, they, they, they can do what they can in certain areas. But once some of these rooms are settled, they then have to get in and do, do their part. So I want to commend them. Also, our faculty and staff that, once again, because of unique circumstances, they, they don't have the ability to maybe get into places that they want to that they typically would. So it's a challenge for them, they really have to adjust their schedules. And, you know, often is the case this summer, have had to put off doing certain things that they'd like to get done because they can't access, access certain spaces, so. It's really hard, we know that. Like Bill said yesterday at the meeting, you know, we keep pushing, we keep pushing. And we're confident that we're, we're gonna be in a good place on September first, so.
And thank, yes, thank you to all of the faculty and staff and all of the workers that are here. They're doing a lot of good work, and I'm glad that they understand why the deadline is what it is. Brings us to community participation. Seeing none. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned, eight thirty-eight PM.